Ask my wife what I spent on Halloween this year.
You told me, you said one piece was like a thousand dollars. One thing.
Well, yeah, I do have a couple of pieces or more, a couple green, but this year I only spent a thousand. Two things.
You say only, there's no way I'm up to the thousand like.
There's only two, two things.
It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this August twenty-second of two thousand twenty-four meeting of the City of Menneson to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilwoman Nestor.
Present.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilor Chakowski.
Here.
Mayor Mosher.
Present.
Mayor, we note five present and note a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Mike Fisher to lead us in prayer. As you like, you can use.
No, Mike. Yes, thank you, I need it.
Sorry. Amen. Lord, I just want to thank this time. I just give you the opportunity, Lord, to rule and reign over all the people here, to be done decently and in order, to be quick to hear and slow to speak and slow to anger, Lord. Give us all wisdom supernaturally to deal with these things, just to prosper the city, Lord, and prosper each other, and above all, give glory to you. Bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There hasn't been a lot of time, but has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the previous council meeting? Are we prepared to make a motion to accept them?
Mayor, motion to approve minutes for the previous session of the special season, uh, session of July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, the council session of August eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for a public comment on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus, twenty-nine Greggs. This new business with these two people coming from a grant. You're going to permit us to ask questions?
No.
No questions at all?
Not until after the, until the end of the meeting.
Are they going to stay to the end of the meeting?
They may or may not.
And then if they don't?
We'll, we'll try to do our best, or we'll get answers for you.
Yeah, because the bottom line is, what I'm gathering, it's like that pool you had last year, eleven million dollars or ten point four million for knocking down buildings, and there's six other towns, you know, reaching for this money. So they have so much, you have to make an application, and where do they draw the line? Who gets it? Menneson gets it? How much? These things got to be detailed. It's not like, oh, we're going to do this, or we may do this, and this might come by.
This will be a long-term process. There's nothing going to be done tonight other than information.
Well, I'm not saying long-term. I'm saying how you determine how much money Menneson gets.
Maybe we'll find out.
I hope so, because that's why we're going to ask questions, or we wanted to ask questions. Now, on page three, you got a list of all these homes here. But you don't say who's paying for it.
That is part of that ten point four million dollars you just talked about.
Ten point four. So far, how much of that ten point four we got for the buildings that went down?
I, I've not gotten a accounting from the county.
Okay, so we don't know. So how do we know we got enough to knock these twelve down?
Because it was promised to us by the commissioners, they'd do another two hundred homes. Two hundred homes.
Two hundred rooms, you're going to need more than ten million dollars.
No, no, not the rate they're going.
Well, what are they going to do? Just knock it down and bury it in the ground?
No, just like we've done all along.
Well, that's what they were doing.
No, it's not.
Those are the debris in the ground.
No.
All I know is this, that we have nothing about industry coming in, right?
Not at this time.
Well, that's what you said for two years now, not at this time.
One of these days, you'll find something different, I hope.
Well, you can't count on just government grants or fundraising.
That's reasonable. We have D C E D.
Well, I hope they're clear enough to tell us what will most likely happen to Menneson as far as what they're going to get. And I don't want to hear like, oh, the comp basis, well, they're going to apply, and whatever goes through there, that's what they're going to get. It's going to be very general, that's all I know.
And it will take some time. Thank you. Anybody else?
Ted, all right, Helen. Uh, first question is, who's doing the demolitions? It's on page three.
Westmoreland County.
About ten or fifteen of them. Who's doing those?
Westmoreland County.
I mean, who's, who's the contractor?
Is, there's Westmoreland County. They do the bidding, they do the, the contracts.
Brian Lawrence, he'll give me who's doing it.
Yes.
Okay. Um, on these grants that you mentioned, that's going to be, that will be discussed, I think you need to be clear that these are all matching grants, they're not straight grants like it, like.
Which grants are you talking to?
The S, S N P P and the N P P.
Right.
They're all matching grants.
They're not matching. They have, they have some participation, yes.
They have a lot of participation. Applicant must provide fifty percent match. That's a lot of participation.
Where are you going to get that money from?
Well, let me, let me finish. But anyway, they're matching. They're not a grant, like when.
As distressed communities, we, we were eligible for, at least we're in the past, for a ten percent match, not a fifty percent match.
Well, for example, Mike Corquash applied when he was going for the money for the comprehensive plan. He got ninety thousand dollars. Mike, you applied for a grant. Okay, my question would be, and I don't know if you could do this, why don't you do some of the grant writing? Could you help in that respect, rather than to get this other firm in here that I've been kind of arguing against? Because that's not a possibility.
We're, it's a, it's a, it's a cooperative effort. We're all working together on this.
Okay, um, and then there was a ten percent, or not ten percent, well, it actually was ten percent, it was ten, ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
The ninety thousand dollar grant was ten percent match. But he didn't write it. Let's be clear about that. You keep saying that, and you're dead wrong. Dead wrong about what? He didn't write it. He didn't work for the city at that time. No, 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 no. I, I wasn't saying he worked for the city. You said he wrote the grant. He did, for himself, for his company. Okay, let's make sure. I mean, nothing against Mike. No, no, I was, I was clear. Was I clear? Mike was part of the plan, the company we went with. Three other guys, Joe Delfonso, Jamie Proden, and Bernie Sarah were part of his company. And he applied for a ninety thousand dollar grant, and the city matched, the city matched it. The city matched ten percent.
Ten, ten percent.
The city did ten percent. Right. Yes, ten thousand, ten percent.
Right.
He did it. That's what I said. I didn't say you worked for the city then. But now that's just trying to bring this, whatever the name that, the letters of the company are, get rid of Urban Design Ventures, which you ballooned the, the amount, the charge on it, twenty percent, eighteen, which is totally untrue. Why can't Mike help out, now that he's an employee of the city, to apply for the, some of these grants?
He can't.
Straight grants, not, not match, not this, not that. And I am Ted, I'm working.
He's working with it.
Answer my question. While you're on the subject, let's clear something else up, to make it clear for everybody, because apparently you have your numbers misconstrued again. It's a call. Oh, yes, you do. My numbers are not misconstrued. Your numbers are anywhere close. And here it is. Here's the actual printout of what the C D B G was for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one, and how much the budget amounts were. In two thousand nineteen, it was two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Two thousand twenty, it was three hundred and thirteen thousand, and two hundred, two thousand twenty-one was three hundred and seventeen thousand. The administrative fee, which would have been what Urban Design Ventures would have got, is under the two hundred and ninety-eight thousand in nineteen, they got fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Do the math. It's eighteen point one percent. Yeah, that's not totally correct. Oh, not, dot, dot, dot. We're not dot, dotting here. We're going exact numbers. I said, no, it's not. It's stutter. No, you're not correct. Yes, I am. You can't add. We can maybe go to school. I can add, I can add. Well, you can do very well, because eighteen percent of two hundred and ninety-eight.
No, he's, first off, he's reading off of the, the.
I understand what he's reading off of.
He's reading off the budget report.
From Urban Design separately, and it's not the way that that is, but. Oh, so you're saying we have different numbers than Urban Design does? Maybe. I don't know. So now you're a maybe. I'm not here. I'm not here. Are you concrete, or are you what? Are you yes or no, or maybe, or maybe it depends which way I stand today? You can't be trusted. I can't be trusted. What did I do that I can't be trusted? Whoa, 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 now you're going to stand up here and do something and accuse me of not being trustworthy. What did I do to not be trustworthy? Put your foot in your mouth and say exactly what it is, because whatever you say you can do, say it in public. Say it in public. You can't be trusted. Why? Tell me why. You have to have a reason. Look at this now. Look at what now? I can look at you, and I didn't say that, but why are you saying that to me? I'm tired of people like you making rash remarks to the public with nothing to back it up, as usual. Then I'll, I'll make sure that I start to break, because you guys, you make it short, so you got to cut to the chase. Or not cut nothing. I got a figure right here that I'll be happy to pass out to everybody that shows exactly the administrative clauses. When you do that, pass out all the attachments that you have, all the things that you don't pass out, and that would be helpful to a lot of people. Talking about something you just brought up and accused us of doing. If you're going to do that, might as well do the attachments. Well, how about we just stick to one at a time, and I'll be happy to do the attachments. Let's settle you up on just one of the things that you're lying about, as usual. I'm not lying about anything. So let's make sure. You gave us six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in a hole, and you were the mayor? Yes, you did. And you told everyone you left us one hundred and twenty-five thousand in a hole. That was when in nine, two thousand nineteen. Really? Oh, absolutely, I know.
And who was the mayor at that time?
Where'd you go to school? Huh? I don't know where you went, but you're not adding up. Your figures dance. Anybody wants to do this besides the paper, if they wanted, I'd be happy to give, give it to you. I'll be happy to take it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
But don't be blowing smoke up people's rear.
Let's continue on. Does anybody have any correspondence they'd like to report to the council?
No, Mayor.
At this time, I'd like to ask the solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Um, last meeting council. Talked about the contract with PennDOT for the viaduct. There is an update with terms of scope of work. Most importantly, all those exhibits we're waiting on should be in PennDOT's construction management system, which I believe the city has access to. So we can verify they're there. We'll be able to fully execute the agreement. It's going to be a type-three deck repair. What they explained was that's going to be a full deck repair of the viaduct. It's going to start sometime in the spring of two thousand twenty-five. There are five or six bridges that are part of the project. The city will receive some advance notice when it's going to start. It will be a two-month closure. There's going to be a detour. We have the preliminary detour. You can put that on the city website. This thing should be out to bid by the end of the year, according to PennDOT. Again, this is no cost to the city for the construction. This will be a PennDOT project. The city will be responsible for maintenance of the bridge, just like it is today. And secondly, we did have our demolition hearings. They are on the agenda. There are some slight changes. Twelve oh one reservoir needs to be removed. We're working with the property owner for that property, seven oh four Ninth Street. The county, I believe, put that property out to bid on an expedited basis. That property suffered a pretty catastrophic fire. And five twenty-nine Sixth Street actively collapsing is also out to bid through the county on an expedited basis. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the city treasurer if he has a report for us.
Yes, your mayor. Mayor, council, and citizens of Menneson, ladies and gentlemen, it's my August report for thirteenth, for July, the month of July. City real estate and taxes collected for the month. Garbage fees revenue, current, July, we received four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Year-to-date, three, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents, budget amount three hundred and fifty thousand. Garbage fees delinquent, July, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Year-to-date, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents, budget amount seventy-five thousand dollars. Amount collected by Portnoy, this was written in the above statement. Portnoy amount was July, three hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents, year-to-date, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. Portnoy penalty and interest for July, fifty-three dollars, year-to-date, one thousand, eighteen dollars and forty-nine cents, budget amount two thousand, five hundred. Garbage fees collected for two thousand twenty-five, we received no payment in July. Uh, year-to-date, seven hundred and sixty dollars, budget amount one hundred and fifty thousand. Total July, seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Year-to-date, for the July total, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Budget amount for the year was five hundred and fifty, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. City real estate taxes revenue, current for July, we received sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventeen cents, year-to-date, one million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Budget amount was one million, six hundred thousand. City taxes collected for prior years, we received no payment in July. Year-to-date, twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents, budget amount seven thousand dollars. Total, uh, city real estate taxes collected, year-to-date, one million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-two cents. City, uh, delinquent city taxes collected, Westmoreland County, July, received no payment. Year-to-date, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six dollars and twenty-two cents, budget amount one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Total year-to-date taxes, two million, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-four cents, budget amount was one million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Distribution is as follows. Year-to-date for the general fund, one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents. The budget amount was one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Depth service, year-to-date, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents, budget amount was three hundred and two thousand, eighty dollars. Year-to-date library, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-one cents, budget amount thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Year-to-date parks, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-three cents, budget amount one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty. Year-to-date, we distributed one thousand, or one million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and six, six hundred and fifteen dollars and fif, forty-two cents, budget amount was one million, six hundred thousand. Miscellaneous collections, real estate transfer tax, July, four hundred, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Year-to-date, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and six cents, budget amount eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, July, twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, year-to-date, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Budget amount six hundred and eighty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars. Mercantile tax, July, six hundred and eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Year-to-date, seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents, budget amount twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Local service tax, July, two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Year-to-date, forty thousand, one hundred and four dollars and twenty-seven cents, budget amount seventy-one thousand, seventy-two dollars. Tax certifications, July, one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, year-to-date, thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, budget amount twenty thousand dollars. In a spilling letters, July, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, year-to-date, eight thousand, twenty-five dollars, budget amount seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Line usage account, unsecured payments, July, fifty dollars, year-to-date, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Line use fee, July, seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, year-to-date, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. For a total year-to-date online usage account, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and one dollars and forty-seven cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month.
Mayor, motion to accept the garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month of July in the treasurer's report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask the city controller, if she has a report that she'd like to present.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The general fund, charleroy federal savings bank checking account. The bank reconciliation as of July, two thousand twenty-four, the beginning bank balance as of June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, was one million, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Deposits made, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Expenses, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, one, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. The beginning balance, ending balance as of July thirty-first, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents. Outstanding checks, sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Outstanding deposits, four thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. The reconciliation balance to the bank statement was seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy cents. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to ask D C E D to give us a presentation, but before we do, I'd like to explain a couple of things real quick. First off, Menneson entered into the stamp program two years ago. Uh, we were in desperate condition at that, at that time, bad position. We advertised for an R F P, but we received nothing back from anybody. Nobody responded to our advertisements. So I subsequently reached out to HUD, and they, they brought us to the D C T A program, Distressed Communities Technical Assistance Program. That program, they provided two consulting teams to the City of Menneson at no cost. They were P F M and L I S. P F M is the financial group, and L I S being the development group. P F M report repair, excuse me, P F M prepared a report that was given to D C E D. In this report, it is this report that provide the catalyst for tonight's meeting. Let me be very clear. There'll be no comments or questions during the, their presentation. The first time you ask, you'll be, you, you speak, you'll be asked to be quiet. If it continues to happen again, you'll be asked to leave. If necessary, it'll be escorted out of the building. We will all act like adults. All comments can be made at the end of the meeting, as long as you don't use profanity, personal insults, or start repeating the same issue over and over again. At this time, I'd like to invite, is it George? You're doing the presentation? George is giving, be giving us a presentation.
Can you hear me with this?
This actually probably works a little bit better and easier moving around.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us, and thank you for your time this evening. So I want to, uh, do a presentation, I think, in a couple of different parts. First, I want to just introduce myself and talk a little bit about D C E D, what we do, and then talk about the Strategic Management Planning Program grant, and then maybe talk about how specifically it applies to Menneson. So my name is George Newsom. I am the local government policy specialist for Southwestern P A. That covers about fourteen counties, a couple of hundred municipalities. I say communities. When I say communities, I mean municipalities, cities, boroughs, townships, towns, all that stuff. I just say communities. So, uh, I work for the Department of Community Economic Development, and what we do is, uh, or what I do, I should say, is I help partner with communities in my region, and we help provide you with resources. Any set of variety of resources that can help with any set of variety of issues that you might be facing. Uh, it could be building out government capacity. It could be dealing with financial solvency. It could be dealing with financial distress, if that's a situation. It could be business growth. It could be all those kind of situations. So I am your liaison between Menneson and the state. And you may see me from time to time come into and just sit in on council meetings, partly because I want to know what's going on in my region, and secondly, because I'm a little nebbie. So first thing I want to pass out to, to, to the elected officials council is this, this handout. This is what I call, this is a fun handout. This is what I consider acronym cheat sheet. Just take one and pass it down. When I first started working in government, I didn't know what anybody was talking about, because everybody talks in acronyms. So I have, I developed an acronym cheat sheet for you guys, and if I, the acronyms I may use throughout this presentation won't be expanded beyond what's on the list. I think the list is about, what, fifty-six-ish? And I think we're number fifty-three. On there somewhere. Uh, so the stamp program is number fifty-three, but it stands for Strategic Management Planning Program, or AKA stamp, uh, uh, program. So that kind of gives you an, uh, uh, an introduction of me and who I am and, and what I do. Now, to talk about, one of the resources that we provide for our communities is the stamp grant, or stamp program, or Strategic Management Planning Program, with all those aforementioned names. What it does is, uh, it kind of gives the community a roadmap of where you've been, where you are, and where you're going to be. And it projects you out for a five-year plan. That's really nice, because, because numbers tell a story, and I'm one of those numbers persons. I like numbers. I like the way they tell stories. So what I want to do next is pass out this handout, which is an abbreviated version of what I'm going to talk about, which is the stamp guidelines. I wouldn't normally have cards, but I ordered my batch and they didn't come in yet. But if you need my information, uh, Mike and Mayor have my contact information, so feel free, you can call me and email me at any time. Do we have enough to go down to everybody? You need a couple more? So the program objectives of the stamp, to assist local governments in identifying, prioritizing, and addressing financial difficulties by implementing short and long-term goals and objectives. Engages in management studies and govern, and operational improvements, which aids the financial administration and management of the local government in decision-making. Another way of saying that is, I get the pleasure of meeting with the officials, mayors, reps, and so on, and I get to ask you what your vision is for your community. Then I say, let's put your vision down on paper, let's try and turn it into a grant. So I get to travel all over Southwestern, uh, Southwestern B A, and I get to hear visions that people have of their communities, which is great. It's, it's really awesome. That's the most fun of my job, aside from traveling the roads and the trestles and the bridges and all that kind of stuff, because I, I have a bias that this is the most beautiful part of the state. So, uh, after I do that, and we sit down, and we try to make that into a, a grant, you put on paper your vision, we, uh, we can, we can try to, we implement, uh, uh, the stamp, we're actually, we implement, we start the application process for the stamp grant. And the stamp grant has phases. Uh, the first phase, uh, when you apply, after you have a, a request for proposal, and you have a consultant, we're going to, they're going to take you through a six-phase process that's going to give you a financial health assessment. Like I said, that's your roadmap, is to where you were, where you are, where you're going to be, out a five-year projection. Okay? Out of that is going to come recommendations, and recommendations become projects, projects become funding. And I want to, I want to really emphasize that, is, is projects draw funding, not the other way around. Funding is not just project. Uh, projects draw funding, and, and, and projects turn into funding. And, and once you have recommendations, they will turn into projects, and then, like I said, you get to the implementation phases, which is when you can start drawing down money, uh, funding. Now, the, the, the scope of the, uh, uh, project will determine the amount of funding that you'll be requesting from the state. And as mentioned, uh, this is a reimbursable grant, uh, so you'll pay out, uh, the consultant, or we'll pay out the, whatever, whatever cost is associated with the project that you, that you determined to choose. or will pay out the, whatever, whatever costs is associated with the project that you, that you determine to choose, and then you invoice me or the state, and we reimburse you for what you paid out. Typically, it's a fifty percent match, but if you, if, if your community is, is titled distressed, then it can be as low as ten percent in, in the match of that process. So, the, the first phase is the financial health assessment. The second phase, and, and the subsequent phases thereafter, become implementation phases where you're able to draw down funding. Funding requests can be anywhere between thirty thousand to a hundred thousand, to forty thousand to two hundred thousand, in those areas. I'm with you through that entire process. Now, I will tell you that when I work with communities, there's a, a, a couple of things that hinder communities from being successful when, when it comes to grant funding. One of the things is not having a clear vision. You already have that. I spend time with the mayor and Mike touring the city a couple of times, doing lunch and so forth, so he has a clear vision. That's what I'm not worried about. The second thing, though, you have to identify a grant manager. And, and so there has to be somebody who I can communicate with on a constant basis, consistent basis, because I'm gonna be sending you documentation, you know, like sample R F Ps and sample narratives or whatever, you know, sample application process, those kind of things. I'm also gonna be requesting documentation from you as well. So, you need to have somebody identified as a grant manager. If you don't, then you're gonna have difficulty with managing that grant. And the third thing is transparency. When anything that involves the state, we ask you to have a past resolution in a public meeting when you're going to do an ask for a particular amount of money. So, not, not only that, it's simple, it's, it recognizes that all councilor on board, but also that symbolizes, or recognizes that you've also informed the public as well. So, I'm with you for, from, from the time you start, I'm with you for, for five years throughout this process. I don't plan on going anywhere else, so I'm with you for the next five years throughout this process. And I'm nice and easy to get along with, and, you know, I'm modest and soft-spoken and all that good stuff. Secondly, when you apply for the, the amount of money in, in the grant request, you have three years to draw down that money within that request. And then, once you draw down that money, if you draw down all the money, even if you don't, but, but once you close, you have to close out that, that grant before you can apply for another grant. And those become, that's how the phases work, like, like in phase two. If you would find out that you want to upgrade something, and, and you, and you have a grant request, and you draw down money for it, before you can go to phase three and, and have another ask, you gotta close out phase two. And, and every phase, you have to have a new resolution as well, you know? So, you're, once again, you're letting all the officials know and, and all the public know that you're going forward and what you're doing, and everything is, is being done transparently. So, and once again, I'm here to help whoever is identified as the grant manager throughout that entire process. Any questions, concerns, comments that you might have, you can feel free to contact me. I'm also local. I live in McKeesport, P A, so it's not, you know, it doesn't take me that long to get here. And like I said, I've been here before, working with Mike and the mayor previously. So, that's the second part of my presentation. Now, the third part, I'm almost done. Hope I'm not boring you guys too much. You guys have already done some work in this, as the mayor mentioned, P F M has already done the financial health assessment. What we want to do is come in, we want to do a more complete financial health assessment. We want to carry it out to the full five years. I don't think it was done for the, for, for the full five years. So, we want to do the full five years, and, 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 and that way, we can make sure that you have a, a, a well-rounded representation of your finances, and that way, we can enter into a full stamp process for, for implementation, for many funds. And, did I miss anything, Bethany? Okay, all right. So, that's my presentation. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Can we ask a couple of questions? Well, these are probably pretty easy ones. For a grant manager, is a city clerk a suitable type person to use for that function?
Yes.
Okay, that would be my first question. The, careful how I say this. This is a five-year past and a five-year future that you're trying to accomplish, whereas the P F M report was three years past, three years in the future. Even the three years in the past caught two years of the prior administration that ran, had, quite honestly, a spending spree. They ran huge deficits, and it really skewed the results going forward as well. Is there any consideration for, for that? And also, going five years in the future, we up here may not be here in five years. We just don't know.
Well, for, because it's already been partially done, we will take that into consideration, and numbers have already been presented, so we don't have to, you know, maybe go back as far, you know, as we would if we were doing one from, you know, from scratch. And in addition, the folks that have already been, have already done partial of the, of the financial health assessment, you can certainly hire them as your consultants to do the rest of it, you know, they can, they can carry out, because their financial health assessment is very similar to the health assessment that we would do from, you know, from, from stamp program.
Hi, everyone. I'm sitting in the back here. My name's Bethany Williams. I also work for the department with George. And to add to your question, Mayor, to something that we're looking at with this report is to move beyond just the, the financial health assessment part of it, but to also look at the operations review. And I think what you're talking about is that there have been some significant changes in the way that business is done from the city hall here, and, you know, the, the operation at, at large has really shifted for the better. And we've had that conversation a number of times of just some of the conscious decision-making that you guys have, have made. And so, one of the things that will be true in this report will be a narrative surrounding things that have been in the works, changes that have happened. That'll be reflected in your financial review, but also from an operational review, to continue talking about changing the trajectory of the city's finances, the city's operations. It'll call out the things that have been positive. It'll call out some of the areas that there's still room for improvement in, and then it'll provide recommendations that we can come forward with and support you through financial commitment to that, and to help you pay for things that will help you be more efficient and more operationally solvent. So, with this program, I think what we're looking to do is scaffold the work that's happening with this administration to look at ways that we can, you know, do a foundation check, make sure that all the numbers are really accurate for what your projections look like, and say, hey, if we're headed in this direction in this particular area, what are our recommendations to turn that trajectory in a positive direction if it's not currently there? If you need the resources to help turn the, the nose of the ship a little bit faster, let's see how we can scaffold that with some funding. So, really, the goal would be to say, we know that there's been movement happening with this administration. We know that you're making decisions. How can we come in and support that with really good database recommendations to keep that, keep that going?
So, one of the things that came out in some of our discussions was with Jonah Pro, and she has some other programs, the N P P program as an example. How does that interact with the stamp program, or does it have any interaction with that?
George is your local rep, so I'm trying to let him build the relationship with you guys here, but I was the Southwest P A Local Government Policy Specialist also, so I have a soft spot in my heart. Jonna is the regional director, and she is over the community-based programs. And so, one of the conversations we were having was, there's a, there's a significant need to support some of the momentum that's happening with the community-based programs, with some of the blight reduction and some of the community programming that you guys have been doing. And our programs don't necessarily have the guidelines in place with our, while we're all D C E D, and that'll be confusing to anyone who doesn't live in our world. Our team is the Governor's Center for Local Government Services, so we specifically focus on governmental operations. Jonna Pro, who's the regional director, has access to a whole different pot of funding through D C E D to, to support the community-based programming that can also help with the health of a, a community. And so, I've always said, and George and I both have lived in third-class cities and spent time working in local government in third-class cities, and so we really understand that side of the equation, that your community-based programs need to be just as healthy as your local government for there to be an overall health change in your community. So, going from years and years and years of distress takes a while to really shift that back to growth and, and progress. And so, the community-based programs need to come alongside of that. So, what Jonna's programs have the opportunity to do is actually draw resources in from the business community, and so the Neighborhood Partnership Program that the mayor's referring to is a great opportunity to draw investment in from a corporation of some kind that is looking for a tax credit. And there have been some really positive changes in that program. The state budget added a bunch of millions of dollars into their pot to continue to do good work through that and increase the amount of tax credits that these corporations can receive if they put that money directly into a community. And so, that funding can be drawn in by a, a local nonprofit and be given to them for operational funding to be able to do good work, like blight reduction or community programming or staffing and capacity building for organizations that are doing good work in Menneson to support the good work that the municipality is also doing. And so, it's kind of that double-based approach of saying, we want our community to grow with our economy. We want our community to grow with our local government, so that as we grow, our, our residents can take advantage of the resources that are coming out as that growth happens. So, if there are new businesses, we have residents who are ready to take on the jobs that'll come in. And so, that Neighborhood Partnership Program is a great opportunity to do that other side of the picture with D C E D and to tap into some of our other resources. It's also a heck of a lot more money than we have in our pot of, of funds, and so, we're really looking for a pretty substantial ask from a corporation over the course of six years to come in and invest in Menneson, and in return, they'll receive a benefit with tax credits, and the city will then benefit of having that money to be able to use for the good of, of the residents of Menneson. So, we are having those conversations from the other angle from D C E D. And so, Jonna, while she wasn't able to be here tonight, I'm, we're in constant communication with her about her approach there. She's gonna guide the, the city administration through how to work with her side of the shop and how to pull in those conversations with those corporations, and then really what programming we're looking to support through that. And so, that will be kind of a double-sided approach. We're gonna hopefully do both simultaneously, as long as we're able to put all the pieces together, and so, it's really kind of all hands on deck at this point with the city.
Thank you. I guess, last but not least, we've done this, the, the stamp program once before. Do we need to redo a new resolution and go through the process as we did the first time a couple of years ago and redo this?
So, we would look for you guys to pass a resolution, mostly because we're actually doing sort of a, a shorter version. We're gonna actually need you to send out a new R F P, because we do have some of the work done already. The good news for you as council is that it's probably gonna bring the cost down of the overall first plan. So, the contribution that we're making will be less, but the contribution, contribution that you guys are gonna make will be less, because we already have some of the data and numbers pulled together that will help with part of the picture. And so, we actually have a couple of examples of other communities that we've done this with, where they had a financial health assessment done, and, and they really uncovered some question marks that they needed a fuller picture. And so, we came in and, and added funding to the picture to finish out that plan. And so, we'll help you with all of those samples, but really, it ended up being a much more cost-efficient way of doing this process. It's not the way that we always go about doing the program, but we, we are appreciative of the fact that you guys took the initiative to do that side of it first, and that you're calling us in to come help to get you into our program so that we can continue to provide that support. So, with that, hopefully, it'll be a lower cost, but it, we will need a new resolution. We'll need a little bit of the legwork done again, only because I think we're gonna have a better response for you guys consultants-wise, because we have a handful of folks who are really familiar with what it looks like to finish out those plans. And I think we know a couple of the questions that we're asking a little bit better now this, this time around. So, we'll, we'll look for you guys to do that, but we'll work alongside of you, give you, give you all the samples that you need. It shouldn't be a whole lot of legwork to, to get that onto, onto the next agenda.
So, with the cycle that goes on in Harrisburg, as far as funding is concerned, what is the timing that we need to be aware of if we're going to proceed in this fashion?
That's a great question. So, we are doing our next review right at the beginning of October. So, we're looking to have resolutions passed, applications in, and all of the details kind of sorted out, R F Ps sent out, responses gathered, so that you know how much money you're applying for before then. And George will walk you guys through all of that. He'll, he'll sit with you through every call. He'll be able to interview consultants with you, do all those kinds of things. But as far as my, my side of the equation goes, which is the review of all those applications, I'm, I'm scheduling that for probably the first week of October, but if not, it'll be the third week.
I do appreciate, anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask? I thank you very much for your information.
Since I'm new, I just wondered, has stamp been around very long enough to see cycles within communities? And have you examples of other communities similar to Menneson that's gone through that entire cycle and came out in a positive direction on the other side?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so, actually, George and I have both been in communities who actually went through that process, and that's part of the reason why we're both at D C E D, because we really understood the value of what that produced for our communities. George was actually in Act Forty-seven community, so it was the, you know, the really heavily distressed communities who we go in and provide very, very in-depth support there. I was in a community that used stamp as a way to divert away from Act Forty-seven, and, and so both of us actually saw the value of, of D C E D's involvement and model in our communities to come in and really provide some really well-timed advice to kind of turn the trajectory. We have seen a number of communities do the five years with D C E D. They'll come in and they'll do that phase one report. They'll do implementation phases, and, and you can submit multiple implementation phases, as many as you're able to complete and as many as we're able to fund within that five-year timeframe, that the numbers are valid. And then they actually, at the end of five years, said, hey, we really need some updated numbers. That report was so helpful. We'd like to go through the process again, get updated numbers, and then actually enter into new phases of implementation, just to keep the ship going in the right direction. So, I could provide case study on any of those if that would be helpful. But I know that between George and I, and our involvement over the last, like, I don't know, three years with the department, we could tell, tell you even just in that time, communities who have done it multiple times, but just from our own personal experience, we've seen the value of that, that really making a huge difference in our communities and giving them the guidance to be able to make data-informed decisions that can help keep the, keep the train headed in the right direction and, you know, making those interventions when we need to. It used to be called the Early Intervention Program, so some people will call it that every once in a while. We rebranded it, because we didn't want people to feel like only distressed communities go through the program. We wanted it to feel like it was open to communities who just wanted to make wise decisions in their communities. And so, that actually made it a really popular program, and now we're very, very busy, because it used to have sort of a stigma with it, and now it's more of a, hey, can you guys help us come in and have a good perspective on where we can go as a community? Yeah, City of Beaver Falls, just in Beaver County, just north. Yep.
Well, I thank you very much. If nobody has any other question? No, no. That's not the purpose. Thank you. I do appreciate your.
I was also the city manager of a community that was in Act Forty-seven. So, I can also, in, in a, piggyback what she said about communities who were able to see, you know, come out of Act Forty-seven and, and able, and able to get the help. What I can do, because I don't have any cards, and Rick Velelo does this, so I'm, I'm gonna do. If you guys have pen and paper, I'll give you guys my contact information. You wanna write? Because I don't know if I, I probably won't be here till the end, so I'm gonna give this to you now. I'm gonna give it to you. He's, he's talking. He's gonna miss the answer.
Could you please pay attention?
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you my contact information. You have a pen? No, I'm gonna give my, no, I'm gonna give my contact information, so you can, you can ask me. Okay, my phone number is seven one seven. Here you go. That's a good pen. I want it back. Seven one seven, six four nine, two four nine five. And my email is G N, as in Nancy, E W S O M E, G Newsome, at P A dot gov. At P A dot gov. G Newsome at P A dot gov. I do better with emails than, than phone. You'll have a better chance of getting me through email than, than by phone. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much, I appreciate it very much. Well, continuing through the agenda, I'd like to point out a couple of things under my section. First off, B and C are duplicated, they're the same thing, and both of them are repeated as, as, as H and I. So we'll skip B and C and we'll do H and I in its place, which accomplishes the same goal. With that, I wanna, I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding some of the things that have gone on in the city over the last couple of weeks. First off, Third Street, if anybody's been over Third Street, they've noticed they've been working on it hot and heavy today. They will finish that up sometime by early afternoon tomorrow, at least that's the plan. We will have a brand-new road leading from Schoonmaker all the way to Third Street Extension, Third Street Extension to, to Marion at the top of the, the hill was replaced a couple of years ago, so it's gonna be a brand-new road. Please don't turn it into a speedway. I will ask our police to, to monitor the speed on that. It does not need to become a racetrack just because it's new pavement. The goal of that is to have that done before the game tomorrow night. Big, big game, football game between Charleroy and Monessin, it always has lots of people there. If you're gonna go to the game, go early because there'll be a parking problem for sure, but don't go speeding through, through Third Street. We've got several other things going on in the city right now, and it's very difficult to understand all these things that are happening because they've got different things happening. As an example, on Mont Raven, we have the water company and the gas company doing work up there. The problem with all that is, they will repave Mont Raven all the way around, including the cul-de-sac. Howsoever, we don't want to do that until we make sure that we don't have a problem with the sewer line that runs from Mont Raven to Third Street. It'd be horrible to pave the road and then come back immediately, dig it up, and, and have problems, so. So I've asked our engineer to ask, expedite the, the camera work on that line to make sure that we do that as quickly as possible, so we know what we need to do there. The same is true on Mont Raven, well, on Marion. Marion has some gas work that was done on it. They've suggested that they put the money for repaving in escrow until which time is we determine what needs to be done with the sewer line. If we have to go back and dig that line, that road up in order to replace the sewer line, because there are some that believe that it's collapsed and, and a major problem, we'd wanna do the paving after we dig it up. Trader Avenue has, has got both water line and gas line work and has the same issue, so engineering's got some big task in front of them right now. They need to get a lot of camera work done, then, and determine how we're gonna move forward on some of these projects. So with that, I'm gonna allow Lois, if she would be so kind, just to start with motion D, and read my motions.
D, right?
Right.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to make a motion to approve payment of W C Inc. invoice number two zero two four dash eighty-nine in an amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars for ten percent for engineering design services for the 2024 C D B G roadway rehabilitation Third Street paving project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve proposed demolition of the following structures and properties within the city of Monessin. Eleven fifteen Ohio Avenue, two-nineteen Alacquippa Avenue, seven Alacquippa Avenue, two-hundred-and-one Alacquippa Avenue, two Reed Avenue, fifty Reed Avenue, six thirteen Ninth Street, six fifty-three Knox Avenue, six fifty-seven Knox Avenue, thirty-four McKee Avenue, two oh-two Reed Avenue, and three thirty-four O'Nada Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the return of an application for inspection and habitation permit fee of sixty-five dollars to Edsaro Bell, as the applicant was not required to pay this fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve Amendment Six to the owner and engineering agreement as attachment K, not to exceed three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars to inspect manholes, acquire the permits, perform the engineering for final design, the bidding process for Phase Three, and the construction and post-construction phases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve PIN Vest Phase Four Pay Application Number Eleven to Reynolds Brothers in an amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars and ten dollars, two hundred and seventy thousand, ten dollars and thirty-four cents for work done under contract M O N twenty twenty-one dash zero two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve PIN Vest Phase Four Application Number Twelve to Reynolds Brothers in an amount of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-six cents for work done under contract M O N twenty twenty-one dash zero two. They will have been paid everything except a five percent retainage that D E P requires until all close-out items are finalized.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'd like to point out that, uh, once we do this, D E P will come in and do an inspection of Phase Four. Once they are satisfied, they'll pay the final five percent. It'll also move it from a, from a construction loan to a long-term loan. Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve a conditional offer on employment as a police officer in the city of Monessin to Valerie Bednar, contingent upon the completion of all necessary testing and required paperwork for the department. Employment shall begin on the first scheduled day of work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Anthony for Director of Accounts and Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to transfer seventy-three thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents from the general account to the payroll account for payroll issued on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices for the Parks Fund in the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars, forty-one cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational account in the amount of three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, seventy-six cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from Liquid Fuels Account in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-four cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Line Usage Account in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Refuge Account in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars, seventy-three cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the retired healthcare benefit payments in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and five dollars and two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion transfer five thousand dollars from the general account to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Following balances are as American Rescue Fund, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy cents, Debt Service Fund, one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and fourteen cents, Fire Escrow Account, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents, General Fund, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-three cents, Grant Fund is ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, Healthcare Fund is four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, Line Usage Fund has seven hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-five cents, Liquid Fuels has sixty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, Parks Fund has one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-nine cents, Payroll has twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, Recreation has four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and six cents, and Refuge Account has one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Lois for her report, if she has one.
Our Streets Department report for July twenty twenty-four. Collected garbage twice a week downtown, they marked fifty-five P A one calls, cold patched several streets throughout the city, fixed a catch basin, reported two catch basins that needed total repairs, put up signs throughout the city, started and finished repairs on a few of the new, of their trucks, cut city lots throughout the city, got new lights in the city garage, and we were able to catch up and open up a few sidewalks and curbs because of the drought, and helped the Parks Department as needed. That is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman John, would you like to give us your report?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Administrative Staff, Citizens of Monessin, here's the following report for the Public Safety Department for July twenty twenty-four. Police Department receipts for the month of July twenty twenty-four. Miscellaneous collections. Copies of police accident reports, one hundred and eighty dollars. Charleroy prisoners, one hundred and seventy-five. Restitution, seventy dollars and forty cents. Miscellaneous, uh, total miscellaneous collections is four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents. Court receipts for District Justice Office. Vehicle code fines collected, four hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Crime code fines collected, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Code enforcement collected, nine dollars and two cents. Total receipts for District Justice Office, eight hundred, forty-six dollars, fifty-three cents. Total receipts collected for July twenty twenty-four, one thousand, two hundred, seventy-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Citations for July twenty twenty-four, sixty-four, year-to-date, four hundred and forty-eight. Code activity report for July twenty twenty-four. Habitation permits, fifteen. Correction letters, twenty-two. Animal complaints, four. Miscellaneous complaints, eighteen. Health inspection, two. Office meetings with residents, four. Citations issued, two. Building permits, three. Zoning permits, fourteen. Following is the Monessin Municipal Fire Chief Report for twenty twenty-four of July. Vehicle accidents, three. Public service, two. Tree down, two. Structure fires, three. Medical assistance, three. Automatic fire alarms, three. Carbon monoxide, four. Wires down, one. Landing zone, one. Natural gas, two. Brush fires, two. Search detail, one. Smoke investigation, one. Assistant State Police Fire Marshal, one. Calls outside the city. Automatic fire alarm, Charleroy, one. Structure fire, fellow-filled township, one. Structure Fire, shallowy, one. Vehicle Fire, Northville Vernon, one. Total Calls, thirty-three, Total Fire Fires, two sixty-two. Fire Fires Per Call, seven point ninety-three, Total Man-hours, three hundred and sixty-two. The following is the Mont Valley Emergency Medical Service, twenty twenty-four, Call Volume. Total Calls, two hundred and twenty-five. Year-to-date, one thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine. Other than that, Mayor, I'd like to thank the Municipal Police Chief For his activities and work with the School District on Monday With the Ross Straver Police Department and the Pennsylvania State Police. I'd also like to welcome all the kids back to a wonderful school year, hopefully, And yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. As long as we're talking about the police, I'd like to point out that the police have received an offer for a K-9. And what we need is a car suitable for that. So this reaches a lot of different people, but anybody would like to donate a police car suitable for the K-9, The city is very much on the market for it. Yep. Councilwoman Karen, would you like to give us your?
Sure. The Parks Report for July is got garbage and picked up litter in the parks, Cleaned the Civic Center as needed, cut the parks and ballfields, Cleaned the pavilions and parks for the events that were scheduled, Put up new basketball nets at Madison Park, Helped the Streets Department as needed, and that's my report. I would like to mention and remind everybody about the community flea market that we have scheduled for Saturday, September seventh, down at the vacant lot at the corner of Fifth and Donner. And also, I had mentioned a few times ago that I was going to go through all the parks and take a look at the benches, Because I, spending time in the parks, I noticed that some of them really were in pretty bad condition. So I went to all the parks and all the other benches that I could find in Manassas and came up with a list. So if anybody would like to help me try to come up with a plan to how we replace some of these benches Or remove them, because some of them are in pretty bad condition, They could be a safety hazard, so I just wanted to let you know that I did follow through with that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself On any item related to business ordinances, statutes, resolution, or daily work product And the attention of the City of Manassas.
Can you hear me now? Karen?
Yes.
I have a suggestion. Why don't you go to some companies and see if a company put their logo on it And provide you with a bench? Don't be coming to the city government for money, okay?
I'm not.
Okay, well, go to corporations. Corporations might put...
We have no shortage of benches in the parks, I might point out, too.
No, but she said that...
Some of them are getting to be old.
Okay, well, she could go to a corporation and see if they'll put their logo on it And provide you with a brand-new bench. You want a suggestion, so I gave you one.
Thank you.
Okay. Tony, you told us last May that you were going to come up with, How are we looking in September about making ends meet by the end of the year? Where are we this day? You're going to have a detailed report in September that we're going to be making ends meet by the end of the year?
I don't have a crystal ball, but I give you up to the date of what we have in the accounts. And all our accounts are paid.
Well, you said you were going to provide us with some sort of outlook in September, that's what you told us.
Okay.
So can you do that in September? I don't want it now, I'm just bringing it to your attention, So you've got at least thirty days to come up with something. Mayor, I have a problem here with you putting Mike Corbusch to do the grant, Because he has too much work as it is. And the way these people were talking about, six phases, And he got to go back five years, and then five years forward, how's Mike going to do that?
Well, first off, the whole point of that is that we all work together on these things.
Well...
And nobody said that Mike was going to do all the work. The whole point of doing the stamp is they will have a consulting firm come in and do this work for us.
And she said you've got to have someone here as a liaison.
To manage it.
Who's going to do that?
The city clerk. That is not Mike, that is the city clerk.
So the city clerk is in a position to do this?
She's in a position to be...
You better ask her first.
I will, but that's what they suggested, too.
Yeah, okay, and then, I'm kind of confused here. How are you going to do this whenever each administration that took over after being voted in? You guys got no records and details what the last administration did. Like, everybody tears up their paper.
Well, that's not true. We have the audit reports from each year, And in fact, all the audit reports going back to around two thousand are on the website now. Each individual year.
Because every time I go on the website, there's always gaps.
Go look on the, there's only a couple of years that are missing, I'm looking for those, those are old years, too.
Yeah, but they're missing links.
They are, but we're talking two thousand and three type thing, I really don't care.
That far back.
That far back.
And what are we doing with the barges? Because the water went down, so what are we going to do with the barges? We're going to wait until a disaster happens?
Part of the plan that we're talking about doing, first off, the engineers, The Army Corps of Engineers has said they spent all their money. They spent their one billion dollars and they don't have a few billion left.
Okay, so when does that leave us?
That leaves us having to be responsible for it ourselves. And that can be a part of a project that we're talking about with this NPP as an example. That, along with several others.
Well, you're not clear with them, because what could they handle? Could they do road repairs? No.
Who?
This NPP?
NPP can do anything. We will have a committee that will look at all the different projects.
Okay, so what are you going to prioritize?
That is for a committee to determine.
You just told me that you're going to determine.
No, I said that a committee will determine this.
Who's the committee?
Committee will consist of thirteen people, I do believe.
They're all from Manassas or they're from out of town?
Some of them are from the community action, they're from the county, And that is by decree by Jonah Pro.
All I know is that we need road repair here, okay?
We do, and as I pointed out, the water company will be doing the most of the road repair. Today, we're doing Third Street. In the end of next month, and then September, we will have the first of two public hearings For how we will budget the twenty twenty-four CDBG budget.
Okay, you're talking future tense. November first, most asphalt and...
I'm sorry, but we're doing, today was Third Street. That's the best I can do for you.
Well, the Third Street, and then all the other roads are let go till next year.
You've got to start someplace. We don't have an unlimited budget.
Because of November first, with most asphalt shut down?
Yep.
So how in the hell are you going to repair anything?
Yep.
What about the EMS, the ambulance?
So far, they've been holding up their end of the deal.
Why does it, I still keep hearing people, Ross Straver shows up and not Manassas?
There's a cooperation agreement, but as far as I can tell, they're responding to over ninety percent of the calls.
Well, this is what I like. You guys make general statements, like Karen asked these two gentlemen and a woman here, If they could provide samples or examples who benefited. And all they say, oh, yeah, we know, but they don't give us no names. No town names, no municipalities, no project names. So all we get is like, we know, but everything's going okay.
Every city is unique.
Yeah, but they don't provide us with any details.
That's because we have the opportunity to determine what we want to have done, And we will do that here in council and the open public.
We want an example, so then we know if it's water going down that road.
Yeah, she...
Beaver Falls.
Beaver Falls.
No, no, that's where they're from, that's where they're from.
But they, no, they... Hey, be quiet. Hey. We have a decorum here. Be quiet, both of you, both of you, be quiet. Both of you, be quiet. Are you both, are you both, are you both? One more time.
One more time?
Okay, officer, would you please escort him out of the building? You keep interrupting them? And I said, both of you, numerous times, you're not both. You can either step out politely, or you can be escorted out. I am not going to put up with it. Would you please escort him out?
Okay, so continuing now.
Thank you.
You people mentioned Beaver, you mentioned Butler, but they didn't tell you what they did? So people just drop names, drop titles?
I would give you, I'll give you a little bit of a challenge. If you Google STMP municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania, You will have a big list. There is a lot of municipalities that are going through this. There is plenty of examples out there. Youngstown is one that comes to mind.
Well, we're not talking about Ohio, we're talking about here...
Youngstown, Pennsylvania.
Oh, okay, I thought you said Youngstown.
I did.
There's a Youngstown there? I didn't know that.
There's lots of, lots of examples.
Well, they give you name dropping, but what do they do there?
There is plenty of it.
How much money do they, how much money do they spend there? How much grant money do they give?
Okay, you made a point, move on.
Okay, well, we've got no clue of how much money they made, as far as grants.
Move on.
Okay, but we dropped names and that's enough, right?
Move on, move on, you made a point.
Okay, so this visionary group that you have, You elected a visionary group in the past. Are they going to be a participant in this determination of how Manassas...
There may be some overlap, I'm not sure.
I mean, maybe, I mean, what have we got the group for?
Well, I don't know what the constituents are going to be in that group yet.
You got the Nehemiah Group, you got the Vision Group, now you got these people...
This is a group for the stamp program.
The thing is, you've got all these groups,
Okay.
And we've got nothing definite for many of them. Well, all I know is that...
So don't do anything, is what you're saying?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, well then, move on then.
But we've got to have some finite probable cause of what is going to come.
I understand.
You can't just do it on some sort of, you know... Like, I remember doing a comprehensive plan two years ago. People were here, were told like little kindergarten kids, What would you like to see when we knocked down these buildings? One person said a theater, another one a boutique, and nothing happened. Two years went by. So we're just wishful thinking and a wishful will, For things to happen, when there's no foundation to make it happen.
Okay.
So what? The buildings are gone, who's going to take over the space? You've got rubble underneath with three inches of grass. That ain't going to bring nobody in.
So invite somebody in.
Yahoo. If it's not working or what, they're going to be, we're going to wait for someone to drive through Manassas? Oh, I like this prairie land here, I'm going to build a ranch.
Okay, go on.
Okay, I just want specifics?
Nobody has specifics.
Well, how are you going to build anything if you don't have specifics?
Because we come up with specifics, you say that nobody has any ideas.
What were you doing the comprehensive plan when they said they were going to do this and that?
Ernie, 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 Ernie.
Yeah, they're going to start now, yeah.
You made a point, go on, move next.
Okay, one last question. What are we going to do with industry? You going to invite any industry here, or just politics and bureaucrats? We're going to bring in consultants and guidance and no future development?
We're working on several projects.
I'm talking about employers.
We're talking about employers.
Okay, when are they coming? They're coming this year, or we're going to wait for another five-year plan?
Could be anything.
I just want specifics, definite people.
And I will give them to you as soon as I am available.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not very well, that mic works better.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor. In case you don't know me or anything, my name is Rick France. I've been the owner and operator of Rick's Custom Polishing in sixteen-hundred Grand Boulevard for thirty-four years. I graduated from there, nineteen sixty-nine. When I decided to open up a place, a building came available, and I went for it, what the old war. I went, and I met all the requirements and zonings and this and that. I operated in Manassas for thirty-four years in a gas station That I used to pump gas at when I was twelve, thirteen. Always paid my taxes without incident for thirty-four years. Also, I've done much work for the city pro bono. You've never seen it. It was mostly for the maintenance department, work departments, Tom McLaughlin, they needed a whole drill, I had heavy metalworking facilities. Done many projects for Manassas, saved them thousands of dollars, Kept their machines running and made them run faster. They can't get parts, I either remade, remade, or counterfeited a part to get them done, okay?
Okay.
Now, I'm selling my building. Seventy-three years old, I've had a stroke, I can't hardly walk, And it was time for me to sell the building. I went down here to talk to Mr. Marvin Davis, Upon which he gave me a couple papers, collected thirty dollars for an application or permit, But stated that being as my business was commercial, He could not perform the inspection. Now, if he is the code enforcement officer, how come he can't inspect it? Is he not qualified? Okay, well then, comes...
They will use K-2 engineering for that. K-2 engineering, he is certified, K-2 engineering is.
Well, here's the thing with K-2 engineering. If you have a city and code enforcement officer, he should be able to do it. The point is, he cannot do it. I want to see his, as a code enforcement officer, He has to partake and pass a state-mandated course, has he done that?
That's the reason why we use K-2 engineering for these type of things.
Okay, so he has, so he has no certification?
If he was the building code official, you're correct. He's the code official.
Yes.
So you're incorrect. He has not enforced the Uniform Construction Code. That is, the building code official, which is K-2 engineering, has been for a number of years.
And how are they related to the Manassas?
They're a professional service that's contracted.
Well, that's what he told me. He's not certified.
He's not certified to be the building code official. He's the code enforcement. Mr. The Fever, you're wrong.
I'm right.
No, you're not.
Yes, I am.
Well, oh, okay.
To not enforce the Uniform Construction Code.
Why didn't Mr. Sharra's administration have a certified code inspector?
He resigned, he's gone.
Because he was a building code official. He was a building code official. Building code official.
There's difference.
Building code official.
We never said he was.
Well, it's true. Now, the problem comes to me. I had a stroke, and I'm selling the building.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I contacted Mr. Davis, I talked to him. He said that I would have to have a brain gutter dye check something.
Dye test, yes.
Okay, have no problem with that. But I have to commission K-2 engineering to secure a occupancy permit. Now, what is an occupancy? I was in the building for thirty-four years. And the thing would be that they told me, I went to shut down the shop, And I had to, according to Mr. Davis, I had to commission K-2 To do, to the cost of three hundred and forty dollars To get a piece of paper that he should have been, that they issued to me thirty-four years ago when I moved into the building. Now, how come?
I'm not sure I can answer that question, I will find out, though.
The problem is that without this one piece of paper, my life is in jeopardy. The cell of the building is in jeopardy. And... Well, it would take three minutes for him to come through, If he's anywhere near qualified to do that, to look at the place, say, yep, it's okay. No gremlins coming out of the wall, the building, the walls ain't falling down. Three minutes, sign that piece of paper. Now, I have to take that piece of paper to my real estate agent That goes to the title search company that will, is facilitating all the paperwork On the transfer of the building. I contacted K-2, talked to, I believe it's Casey, And she says it would not make sense as I am the seller, not the buyer.
Right. I'm not sure why you're going through all this in the first place.
Mr. Davis.
This would be the buyer, would it not?
Usually, it's contingent on closing to have an occupancy inspection before the transaction closes. No. Yes.
Well, who performed that? I thought a code enforcement officer.
You have a commercial building.
Yes.
A building code official, not code enforcement officer. Somebody who's authorized to implement the Uniform Construction Code Because it's a commercial building, has to do the occupancy inspection by law.
So I have to spend three hundred and eighty dollars for them to come in here?
If that's what the fee is, yes.
For the privilege of selling this building?
Yes, that's what the law states.
Well, then, how come I talked to K-2 and they said that that was not so? I'm getting a royal runaround here.
The city's got to look into that, to why they would tell you that.
I would think that that would be part of the purchase agreement, who pays for what, anyway? Well, it could be the buyer, it could be the seller, depending on the agreement. I know that a lot of that has changed dramatically over the last few weeks due to some changes with the realtors.
Well, that's the thing, I'm chasing my tail and trying to chase a ghost here.
Well, I, give me your phone number, you can either give it to me in private or...
No, no, I have no problem.
I will research this tomorrow.
Rick France, R-I-C, or Eric France, if you want to get formal about it. It's seven-two-four, five-five-four, eight-one-nine-five.
I will check into this and give you a call tomorrow.
Because when I sold my father's house on...
That's a house, not a commercial business. And laws have changed, yes.
I guess that's it, I mean, I just think this is totally unrealistic here.
I will try to find, get some answers for you and understand myself, I don't understand it myself. Thank you. Anybody else?
Madeline Dudas, Thirty-Two Shaw Drive, Manassas. Who owns the parking garage on the Donner to Schoonmaker?
The city does.
The city owns it?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been evaluated as to what the cost for repairing or demolishing it? Or, I'm asking this because I go to Felicia's.
Felicia's, they need parking.
And it's not only Felicia's, but how can you attract small businesses?
Yes, I don't disagree with you a bit.
And I know at one point, we had, we were able to go in the Schoonmaker area And maybe four, two on each side were open that you could use to park. But now, that, of course, is all blocked off, and you've got to park, you know, Get your exercise program in before you buy your pasta.
Right. So there are some other buildings that are going to be demolished out there on Schoonmaker, And hopefully, some of those will open up as, that can be used for parking. But to be real honest with you, the parking garage was condemned. It was condemned many years ago, and when we asked...
The whole thing was, the upper part as well as the lower part?
Yes, the whole thing was condemned. The insurance was dropped on that. So we contacted the insurance company and said, what do we need to do to get this reversed? They said, well, you have to get an engineering study done and so forth. We went to WEC, and WEC said... We went to WEC, and WEC says, what was it, nine thousand dollars? Nine thousand dollars for the engineering, and that includes no work to be done. That's not nine thousand dollars to determine what work needs to be done. So, after that, we get that engineering study, we'd have to invest even more money into it. I think council as a whole is very sensitive to the need for parking up there, there's no doubt about that. We've gotta find a solution. I'm not sure it's in that parking garage, but it might be in some of the other land that is vacated from buildings that we might be able to do something with. We've gotta come up with a solution though, you're right.
Yeah, I think it's really a tragedy.
It is a tragedy, that it was condemned, and to demolish that building, we've had quotes anywhere from several hundred thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars.
I can imagine that would be very.
Because we don't have the money. But it was condemned even further, further than that, it was, the top was condemned, you can't use the top.
You can't use any little part of it, like four of them?
We thought that we'd be able to get six, six spots on the top part, and the engineering came back and said, you need to go underneath there and look at the falling plaster and the semen. He said, no, and it, the, when they, soon as they said that, the insurance would not insure it.
And I was curious, I, in the newspaper, the delinquent garbage fees, I think it was, that was in there.
Mm-hmm.
How, how does that work? Cause you just send letters out to the people to say you owe, because there's a lot of money, I think, from what I've seen, that are owed.
We think so.
And, or is there a company that you contract with?
Well, Portnoy is the company that we use for collecting back garbage bills. So, if you're late on garbage bills, it goes to Portnoy. So, Portnoy's the one that has historically gone and tried to get collection from the people for their garbage bills. In the course of that, they incur legal fees, they incur, well, I don't know what else they incur, legal fees and interest, I don't know. Penalties. So, what the, the amnesty program will do is it gets them to cut their legal fees in half, is that right? And their penalties be dropped?
The penalties and interest will be waived, correct?
Penalties and interest will be waived. They will be sending out letters to all those people they've been trying to collect money from in the past and say, you have a limited window of time between now and the end of the year that you can make good by paying your garbage bill at a very reduced rate from what it would, what they've been asking in the past.
What's the consequence if they say?
If they don't, then, then it'll go back to what it was.
It'll just go through the collections, liens will be filed against the property. Portnoy will file civil actions against some of these people.
They'll try to take you to court, that's what Portnoy's is doing it. They're, they're an aggressive company too. Anybody else?
I think she was referring to the taxes, not the garbage. I think she was referring to the comment that came out.
My name's Ed LaFever, Keystone Drive. In the One Valley Independent on Wednesday, July thirty-first. We had an official here from the state, uh, she's a PhD, yeah, she represents the Department of Drug and Alcohol Abuse Programs. She met with a group of people at Saint Vincent de Paul, and then she met with some families, uh, at the family center, it says, in Menneson. My question is this, has anybody from city government attended this, uh, this meeting with this important official from the state, from Harrisburg?
I have in the past, but not recently.
So, here we, here we, here we have, here we have this woman that's going around to the counties. She's, she's, she's trying to educate, uh, people in these communities like Menneson about the drug problem, and she met with families in this other building, and there was no representative from the city of Menneson.
As far as I'm aware, I was never notified she was doing this. Well, after the fact, after the fact.
She never actually notified?
No, I've never received notification.
Uh, it's, all it says is.
Drug enforcement.
It was a listening group. Uh, she was visiting statewide tour to gauge how each of the Pennsylvania communities is handling the overdose and opioid epidemic. Let me just say this, Mayor, if I were the mayor, I would really contact this woman and tell her that you were not aware that she was coming, and that if she has.
What, when did that come out? I will find out, I will call her.
Her name is, uh.
What's the date on the newspaper?
The newspaper, it's, uh, July thirty-first. The thing is, what struck me was, they took a picture of her meeting with these families, and I, I find that very important, uh, and then, like you said, you were never contacted. That's very unfortunate. Maybe it was her part that she didn't inform the city of Menneson, but that seems very odd.
Sorry. As far as I know, she notified nobody. Did we get an invitation?
I think she was invited by the SPHS up there.
Yeah, probably, it doesn't say that.
So, if they don't invite us, how are we gonna be informed?
As much as people keep us informed, we will.
Just one other comment. I came across this, I don't know if Menneson is involved in this, uh, or you would actually seek a grant. It's called the Community Service Block Grant, CSBG, and it's for, um, the work to, uh, look for the causes and conditions of poverty, uh, and just in the disadvantaged and low-income communities or, or sections of a community. Have you heard of that?
Is that related to CDBG? It sure sounds like the same mission.
No, it's called CSBG, Community Services.
It's not part of CDBG though.
Is it?
I don't know, I'm, I'm. Excuse me?
It's on this list though, so maybe, maybe.
Yeah, it may, it may be related.
Yeah, it's on this list, yeah.
So, that's a possibility of receiving income from them.
I just got one more question. Connie, Connie Holly got bought out by Noble.
That was years and years ago.
Okay, well, I heard they're gonna start increasing the prices.
We don't know, they're gonna be going out for bids, we'll find out.
Who's handling that?
They're, the, the.
Who's gonna interact with the council here? Who, who's talking, Tony?
We have a refuge authority that is a combination, is a multi, how do you call this? Municipality, council, uh, authority that controls the bidding, the contract, all of that. And that, that is in the process of going out for bid sometime, probably in September. And that's when we'll find out what we're gonna be having, who's interested in services.
But you're gonna have an input in this because I hear they're gonna double the increase in the garbage collections.
I'm not part of that authority.
Well, okay, so we're not part of it, but we're gonna get in.
But you, you can go to those meetings.
When is the next meeting? You're telling me to go, you guys don't even know. Yeah, well, I'm talking in behalf of the public, we, we pay taxes, so we should know what's coming down the road. And we don't. All we get is other government people come here and give us false hope, or you gotta talk to all those hopes.
Okay, Ernie, Ernie, keep on target, what else, what else do you have for questions?
I just want definite things to be present here at the council, that's all I want.
All right.
Definite probability.
We'll get you the dates for the, the refuge authority, and you can go to those meetings, and you can get it straight from them.
Okay, well, where at, here?
They alternate between here and North Valverna.
Valverna?
Yes.
I just got one question. The project on Third Street has been up for to pay the invoice, correct?
Not yet, but it will be soon.
Okay, so the seventy thousand dollars that was allocated for Tenth Street, did that go back in the pool, or where is that? And you said that we're meeting sometime in September for the next year's CDBG money? So, I just need to know where that seventy thousand dollars went, and if it didn't go to Third Street, like you said, how come it can't go back to Tenth Street?
And Mike, but Tenth Street was out, was told, we were told we could not do Tenth Street by.
Okay, now, were you told that you couldn't do Tenth Street by Mr. Haglen?
We were told by, Charlie Fees told me that we could not do Tenth Street because there was not enough disadvantaged people living on that street.
Okay, it has a name, a street name.
Tenth Street.
And regardless, no, no, it's Tenth Street, and I think Valley View or Mountain View or something like that.
So, think about this for just one second. Consider this, from Tenth Street to Fourteenth Street on Knox, how many people live on that street?
I don't care how many people live on it.
Wait, wait, let me finish.
Mayor, you're not understanding what I'm saying.
You're not understanding what I'm saying.
Just because there's only four houses there, that doesn't mean they don't deserve a street.
I invited you to come by, and we would call Charlie Fees, and he, and you, he would tell you exactly what we could. I invited you to come by.
But you never did.
I invited you to come by, I'm here every day, come by, we will call Charlie Fees, and we will talk to him.
Yeah, because it doesn't make sense to me, it's a road in Menneson that needs to be repaired, just like Third Street.
Right.
The only thing down there is what, four houses in that apartment building?
Right. And in fact.
Well, that has been like, that's just like Tenth Street, it's been like that for forty years.
That's not necessarily true, I did take Charlie Fees up to Evergreen up there, and I said, I, I talked to him about that. Charlie Fees said, well, this is kind of interesting, that is the access road for this whole side of town to get to the church. It has nothing to do with, with that, that is a major access road. And he said, that could, there could be an argument made for paving that road. So, that's something we can discuss when we start doing our budget process.
Well, I would like to see that also taken in consideration for Tenth Street.
Okay.
Cause after all, Tenth Street is because you even get the CDBG money in the first place.
Come, come talk to me, and we will call Charlie Fees and talk to him.
I just have a question, just add to the question, because if it was approved originally, what's the difference between when it was first approved and now?
Because we approved it by council didn't mean that the CDBG would approve it. And when they vacated the, the, the Highland Manor over there, that removed the need for that. There was nobody over there that would utilize that road in significant numbers.
I thought it was already approved though.
But it was approved by council, not by CDBG, we still have to meet their requirements.
I could have sworn it was already on there.
But why did we approve it, we didn't think it was?
I could have sworn it was already approved by, because it was in the funding already. And then, we moved it, so if it was already in funding, you're saying, it was already in the funding, but we took that money from it for Tenth Street, so it was already there.
You can join us on this call to Charlie Fees.
But it was already in there because it was moved from there, so that's what I'm not understanding.
That doesn't mean that they're still going to do that. It does.
Wait a minute, wait, that doesn't make sense. The whole city is now CDBG eligible. Why would it matter what it is, where it is, why it can't be done?
You need, you need to look at these applications that were made for all of the paving. Every time you do a paving, you have to estimate how much traffic that road gets, who benefits from that road, and so forth.
But CDBG said the whole city is eligible for CDBG money.
So, as an example, we were contacted by Charlie Fees.
Everything, it used to be. Certain areas, but that's not the case now.
The whole area is eligible, but not certain streets, just like Evergreen is not eligible for CDBG because there's no, there's no residents.
It could be because, because of the access to a public, to the only Catholic church in town.
But there's major access, and the playground parks there, I don't understand that.
Come to see me, we will make a phone call, we will address that.
Yeah, I don't understand that. When, when, when can we meet with that guy? You know how much, how many people are going to that park now, since it's been updated? That's ridiculous, it was, those streets were filled with cars up there across Ninth Street and far up. So, you cannot say that park is not access to a lot of business now. I, I think we need to meet with him.
And we can, we can, we can give a call, and we can talk to him about that.
There comes a time where you have to take care of every part of Menneson.
Absolutely.
And that place has been left so bad, and now that something new there, we can't make a road access better for it so that people can come there and park in a nice location. Do you know how much that, that street was nice, how many people could park up there? But nobody's taking their cars down there like they're gonna get flat tire or something blown out on the bottom. I'm just being serious, it's about time we do something for that area, not just a little bit in the park.
I'm saying, we can talk about it.
We need to meet with Mr. Fees, I bet you he'll change his mind.
Maybe so, maybe so.
Yeah.
He's very familiar with the road.
Yeah, we want everybody to be proud of Menneson, we want everybody to take part, but you know what? How do you think those people feel up there? How do you think people feel up there?
How do you think people feel on, on Knox between Tenth and Fourteenth Street?
Right, same thing, but it's the same area, that's what I'm saying.
But Tenth and Knox has lots of residents.
It's the same area, so let's make a difference, start somewhere.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Third Street is a major access road for a good portion of town, there's three, three roads that get up there. You, I've got a counter on it, I, there's hundreds of cars that go on that street every day. Parenti, we would love to do, but Parenti's too expensive, it's more money than we got.
Yeah, I think we need to schedule a meeting with him.
We can, he was here last, last week, or two weeks ago.
But you have to realize, a lot of us have full-time jobs, so we need to be willing to meet after hours, maybe.
He's also available via phone, so we can give him a call at any time you have an opportunity. We can do a video conference with him. We can invite him back.
Yeah, we can, we can do a phone, cause we work.
We're going in circles. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is ended, thank you.